Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, held here on October 15, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to call to order. Second item is to pledge allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item three is public comments. Monica, has anybody signed up tonight? Okay. Item four is superintendent's recognition. Dr. Adams, members, if you come, please in front of the dais. Item B is alumni spotlight.
Well, good evening, Board. We're very excited. We have two alumni to spotlight tonight. And so we'll start with Erica Allen Bennett. And Ms. Bennett, Dr. Bennett, was not able to be here, but we do have her parents here, so we'll ask them to come on up so they can be recognized. And then I'll read a little bit about Erica. Erica Allen Bennett is a proud graduate of the Temple High School class of 2009, and she was valedictorian of her class. Erica attended Bethune and Kennedy Powell Elementary Schools, and then she was at Lamar School, Middle School, where I was proud to be her teacher. Dr. Bennett would go on to graduate with honors from Texas Tech University, where she was also active in student government, serving as president of her sorority, and was on the homecoming court. She earned her Doctor of Medicine from Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center in 2018, and returned to Temple to complete her residency in general surgery at Baylor Scott and White Hospital, and served as chief resident, and received the Outstanding Surgery Teaching Resident Award. Dr. Allen completed a fellowship in trauma surgical critical care in North Carolina, and she recently moved to Medford, Oregon, with her husband, and works as a surgeon in private practice at Asante Rogue Regional Hospital. And today was her official first day of work. Yay! We're celebrating her, too. Oh, so, so when asked, Mrs. Allen loves to stand in the spotlight. So when asked to Erica, what does being a Wildcat mean to you, Erica said, "My high school years were some of the best years of my life. At Temple High School, I made lifelong friends, developed my critical thinking skills in IB courses, sang my heart out in polyphonics, pushed my athletic skills in track, cross-country, volleyball, softball, and swimming and diving, built a solid base of knowledge in Spanish, learned from countless mentors, teachers, and coaches, and earned a degree that set me up for a successful career as a surgeon." Returning to Temple for my surgical residency really showed me how special it was to be a Wildcat. And I was connected with so many individuals in the community just from our shared memories at Temple High. I am honored to receive, to be recognized as the alumni spotlight, and hope there are continued to be Wildcats who get to enjoy this same wonderful experience. And so since Erica wasn't able to be here tonight, we're pleased to recognize her parents, Debbie and Scott Allen. And thank you for being here, and congratulations to Dr. Bennett.
She's ready to get out of here. I've known Erica, I guess, for almost seventeen years now. It's just super impressive. I remember the day that she graduated from Temple High School as valedictorian. Impressive, impressive family, everything. The whole family is impressive, but Erica is definitely outstanding. I can't think of any better alumni for this award. So, congratulations. Would y'all like to say a few words?
I just want to say a couple of things. Erica asked me to say a couple of things. One, she is very thankful for this award. She's very honored to receive it. She also said that she had a wonderful education at Temple High School. She had wonderful teachers that drove her to learn more, learn better, and do well. So she was very pleased with that. She's also very sorry that she couldn't be here today. But it is, after fifteen years of graduation, she finally has her first job. And she starts today, so she couldn't make it. But thank you all very much.
And we got one, we got, take a picture.
We do have another alumni to recognize tonight, Laura Lee Slattery-Orear. And she wasn't able to be here either, but we still want to, she had a family emergency, but we still want to recognize her. And so Laura Lee Slattery-Orear graduated from Temple High School in the class of 1976. Born and raised in Temple, she attended Jefferson and Dixon Elementary Schools and Travis Middle School. Orear would go on to graduate from Temple College and the University of Mary Harden Baylor before starting her career as an educator. She started her career as an early childhood teacher at Scott Elementary, and would go on to teach at Vanderbur and Freeman Heights Elementary Schools. She moved to Grover ISD and served in a variety of roles, even spending three years as superintendent after earning a master's degree and completing her superintendent certification at Soul Ross State University. She was principal at Merkel and Hamlin ISD and supervised student teachers at McMurray University. Even in retirement, she has stayed involved with education, working as a bookkeeper for a private nonprofit childcare academy in Tennessee, where she now resides. Orear remembers her third-grade teacher, Mrs. Hodges at Dixon Elementary, as her favorite teacher, and credits a number of her former teachers and administrators in Temple ISD as being instrumental to providing her with the tools she needed to be a better teacher. When asked what it means to be a Wildcat, it means that you're always loyal to Temple and the values and traditions that have been a part of Temple and Temple High School for generations. I remember stories my grandmother told of providing milk to the elementary school that my mother attended, and know she was so proud to do this to help all students. This was right after the Depression era. She was a widow and on a limited income, but had dairy cattle, so she could help the school my mom attended. This pride was instilled in me early on, that not only do you attend school, but you give back while attending, in the form of keeping your grades up, listening and respecting your teachers, and learn as much as you can to provide for yourself and for your future. Let's see. Mrs. Orear said that it was an honor to be a teacher in the district in which she graduated, because she gained so much knowledge and expertise, and joined the ranks of the teaching field. And she always took her first pride as a Temple Wildcat, regardless of the school that she served in. And she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she does reside in Tennessee, and she was, she was, she's very grateful for the opportunity to be celebrated as an alumni spotlight. We'll give him a round of applause.
Sorry that she couldn't be here tonight, but we definitely understand, definitely a worthy candidate for alumni, outstanding alumni from Temple High School. Thank you. Our next item is the welcome introduction of Colonel Lakeisha Stokes.
Colonel Stokes, if you would just stand up, we want to recognize you and welcome you from, Colonel Stokes is the Garrison Commander at Fort Cavasos. And so we're very grateful that you're here, and we just wanted to say welcome.
Kind of a back at you. We thank you, Colonel Stokes, for your service. You know, and I've said this many times, without your service, without democracy, there would be no free and public education. It just wouldn't happen. So we really appreciate your service and dedication to our country. Thank you very much.
Item C is a National Merit Committed Student.
We are very excited. We have a student here. So Genevieve, will you come on up to the board, right up there to Dr. O? Yep. So we are pleased to announce that one of our Temple High School students was named among the top 4% of students in the nation by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Temple High School senior Genevieve Allen, or Gigi, as she likes to go by, has been recognized as a commended student for her performances on the 2023 Preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test, or we just call it the PSAT. The PSAT is taken by juniors across the company, country, and it is the first step in competing for scholarships their senior year. Of approximately 1.5 million students who take the test, only the top 50,000 are recognized. That's something, that's impressive, Genevieve. Genevieve is a member of the varsity tennis team at Temple High School. She serves as editor-in-chief of the Wildflower Literary Magazine. She's an IB diploma graduate, and is also taking advanced placement in history. Genevieve, on behalf of Temple ISD, congratulations on this extraordinary accomplishment. We're so proud of you, and make sure you stay there so mom and dad can take all the pictures they want. Congratulations.
Like to make a few comments about Gigi. First of all, she is very impressive as a student. And I don't know if you read the Temple Daily Telegram article, but they finally had to cut me off because I couldn't say enough positive things about Gigi, about Gigi, excuse me. It doesn't surprise me that she has won an award with the word national in front of it, because she is that type of student, and I expect her to win many more. You know, as Lisa pointed out, she's involved in a lot of things, super bright. I work with her closely on her extended essay for IB, so I have a chance to sit across from her and see my mind stretch as she talks. It's not me stretching her mind, I promise you that. But she is, she's not just intelligent, she's not just good academic or great academically and involved in things. She is so kind. She has such a great spirit. I mean, she really does. People gravitate to her. And you know, you, you see a lot of times in life, people that ascend a certain level, and accolade, or whatever it may be, and they may lose some of that, but she doesn't. That is a big part of who she is. So Gigi, I'm proud of you and your talents, and we are so grateful that you share them with Temple. Thank you very much. And we also know that this thing is a team sport, so Gigi is going to introduce her family.
On the front row, this is my family. My brother's here, Oliver. Wave. Okay. And then my grandma, and both of my grandmas, my mom and my dad. Thank you for coming, guys.
And I would not be surprised if she is standing up here one day as a distinguished alumni as well, or alumni spotlight as well. So congratulations, Gigi. We are so proud of you.
And our next item is Principal Appreciation Month.
Awesome. Excellent. Well, every year, the month of October gives us a chance to recognize our campus leaders during Principals Month. The 15 campus leaders in Temple ISD serve their students, families, and staff in a variety of roles. At various times every day, these principals serve as administrators, educators, counselors, role modelers, cheerleaders, opening milk, all the things, the list goes on and on. But these leaders also serve as the captain of their shift for their campuses. Whether there are distractions, storms, or rough seas, or even in times of smooth sailing, these principals keep their campuses and their students, families, and staff members they serve pointed in the right direction. So with that in mind, today, we have for you a little gift that we're going to, I'm going to call your name in just a minute, and you'll come up and shake the board's hand, and SLT will, will hand out these gifts to you. But we wanted to make sure that you had a compass, because just like the one I'm holding, you are the compass for your, for your campus. You make sure that you serve as a reminder that we should never lose sight of our destination. You chart the course, you make sure that we keep focusing on a destination of excellence. And so we wanted to make sure that you had one of these today. We want to tell you thank you so much for leading camp, our campuses with intention and with passion. You do everything for the students and the families of Temple ISD, and we're eternally grateful for your service. So thank you so much. So with that being said, I'm going to call your name, and you'll come up, shake hands, and walk through here. All right. Dr. Teresa Curz is the proud principal of Meredith Early Childhood Academy. Courtney Christians, proud principal at Hector P. Garcia. Jill Owen, proud principal of Kennedy Powell Elementary. Amanda Slay, proud principal at Jefferson Elementary School. Quinesha Williams, proud principal at Scott Elementary School. Nikki Murphy, proud principal at Ray Allen Elementary. Crystal Thomas, proud principal of Sampson Howard Elementary School. Michelle Rhodes, our proud principal at Thornton Elementary. And Western Hills, our proud principal, Tiffany Vestal. So those are our elementary principals. And our secondary principals. Michael Hobbs, Bonham Middle School. Yvette Bradford, Lamar Middle School. Dr. Casey Blumquist, Travis Science Academy. Tricia Mitchell, Edwards Academy. Carl Pleasant, Wheatley Alternative Campus. And Dr. Jason Mayo, Temple High School. Let's give our principals a round of applause. Okay, principals, y'all get in front so we can take a picture.
So as we're lining up for a picture, I'll just say to the principals, I, you know, in any school district, some things start at the district level, and some start at the campus level. But one thing is true, is everything, no matter where it starts, it finishes at the campus level. And we are so grateful for their leadership. We're very blessed. Our 15 campuses have fantastic people at the leadership post, and we thank each and every one of you.
Item five is executive hire. Dr. Warren, like, no items tonight? Item six is Board President's Report. A City of Temple Northwest Hills Neighborhood Plan and General Bruce Drive Concept. Aaron Smith, welcome. Thank you for coming again.
All right, we are on. Well, thank you all for having me this evening. I have two presentations for you tonight, not just one. Lucky, lucky us. So this is our Northwest Hills Neighborhood Plan. You can see that Northwest Hills is one of our few neighborhoods that are actually, it's actually on the west side of I-35. It's close to our newly identified Western Hills neighborhood, as well as the central neighborhood. So you can see here, Western Hills, or Northwest Hills does contain the Kennedy Powell Elementary School in the northwest corner of this neighborhood. And it's a great neighborhood. It actually houses three parks, which is more than any that we've seen in our other neighborhood plans. Those parks are Northwest Hills Park, Salisbury Community Garden, which is the community garden, Soul Community Garden right now in Temple, and then Little Blue Step Park. And then here's a little bit closer look. So you can see Kennedy Powell there, up in the upper northwest corner. You do have some vacant land, you can see there, that we'll talk a little bit about on the west side, as well as on the far east side of this neighborhood. So through our public engagement process, as we started beginning plan, we do a lot of research about the neighborhood, and then we get feedback from the neighbors through surveys, as well as a event that we put on, a series of focus groups, anywhere from businesses to residents to school districts. We meet continuously with our external planning team throughout the process as we develop the neighborhood plan. And then once the neighborhood plan's developed, we complete a MPD news edition to go over the plan elements. And then lastly, we meet with various boards and commissions of the city, as well as our Temple ISD school board. So here's the current zoning breakdown you can see in the neighborhood right now. So a lot of single-family, but you see that that's actually right now zoned, very different than what, it's zoned multifamily, a lot of that, as well as you see some commercial and retail. So, but you do predominantly have that commercial retail edge along Airport Road, as well as the eastern part of the neighborhood that's close to I-35. There are very few sidewalks in this neighborhood right now. So as you can see, there's some on Airport Road, some internal, you do have some sidewalks leading from Airport Road over to Kennedy Powell Elementary School. Overall, most of the sidewalks are in very good condition. You see some parts that are in fair condition, like the portion leading to Kennedy Powell, that's closest to Airport. Then we look at the opportunities and constraints of the neighborhood. We do have some opportunities here that we can seize for some infill development, as well as some new development on those vacant parcels that I mentioned. Major entryways right now into the neighborhood are typically accessed from Airport Road, whether that's on Salisbury Drive, or Liberty, or I'm sorry, John Paul Jones Drive. And then there are some, we see some opportunity, though, as you saw, we do lack sidewalks in the neighborhood, so we see opportunities for sidewalks leading to both parks and the school. So here's one example of that. You, this is the intersection of John Paul Jones Drive and Liberty Drive. John's Paul Jones Drive, if you recall, that's that north-south connector there. We're recommending the addition of sidewalks along that corridor that would lead to the planned areas, north and south edge, as well as some safe pedestrian crossings. And we also recommend sidewalks be added to Liberty Drive to access the parks, and the largest park within the neighborhood, which is Northwest Hills. We have some opportunities, as you can see, for some infill. There are some existing duplexes or homes within the neighborhood. You can see in the little snapshot there, the Polaroid before photo, that's what's currently there now. And some of that is really in need of reinvestment. So we're providing an example here on this slide that could show an opportunity for some infill development. It would really reduce the number, the amount of driveway that would be in the front yard, so creating a better pedestrian environment by having the sidewalks there and more of a front yard presence, and the parking either to the side or to the rear, and then having a nice inviting front porch that would match the character of several of the homes.
Aaron, would that be accomplished through, I guess, the plan development, or whatever?
That would have to either be a private solution, or it could also be a solution done by our Temple Revitalization Corporation, which I will talk a little bit about my next presentation, because I haven't talked to y'all about that yet. But there's some ways. But typically, that would be more a private investment, but we have some ways. Right here is an example of an apartment complex that's over there. Right now, you can see in that Polaroid photo, there, the dumpsters are just out. It's not very visibly appealing to people that are walking by. Often, also, when you have dumpsters located on that or in a corridor like that, you'll have some dumping by non-residents. So we're recommending some changes that would really beautify this area. So that would be some coordination we would need to do with the apartment complex owner. That would include screening around the dumpsters, maybe some security cameras that would also help alleviate some of the issues that have happened with some of that non-residential dumping. And then just the addition of some nice landscaping would really create the visibility, create a better visibility. Here's our overall thoroughfare plan. You can see, we go through this neighborhood, and we identify all of the different types of roadways. And I'll go through some of the improvements of those major roadways. So of course, Airport Road, Tex-Stop Roadway, State Highway 36, that would be more of your major arterial roadway, and Nugent Avenue would be a minor arterial. You do have also some collector streets that you see there in the yellow, and that's taking you from different areas within the city, not just to the neighborhood. But then also in the purple, we show some neighborhood collectors, such as Salisbury Drive, which a lot of the residents utilize to get to their residence. So first, talking about Airport Road, you know, we do lack sidewalk infrastructure along there. And it's really important with that type of heavy speed roadway, that we add a nice side path there. So we show two different examples. One, if you have more limited right of way, you could do an eight-foot side path. But really, ideally, you would have a nice 10-foot side path with a nice planting buffer. It's typically a little bit smaller for those slower speed roadways, but because Airport Road is a lot faster, our recommended planning buffer width would be 12 feet, being able to go down all the way to 6 feet, depending upon that. And then we have Nugent Avenue, that's the minor arterial that is along the northern boundary. Recommending having two continuous travel lanes with a center turn lane throughout there, a side path on one side with a minimum of eight feet, and a sidewalk on the other side, and both with having a nice planting buffer in between there for that pedestrian safe, safety, as well as some increased lighting along that roadway. Sealy Road, that is the north-south roadway that runs adjacent to Kennedy Powell. So we're recommending a, two travel lanes, a turn lane, so that would help break up the traffic and create a better traffic flow, getting into the school, as well as other places within there, creating that nice pedestrian accessibility through a 10-foot side path on one side and a five-foot sidewalk on the other side, and making sure we do have those enhanced safety crossings. And moving on the 43rd, that is actually not an existing street right now, this is recommended within the planned area, that we would like to see, it would help break up the traffic a bit. A lot of the traffic going north-south will often use, you know, just a few of the roadways that exist now, and that would create more of a direct connection over there to Salisbury Drive from Airport Road. So that is recommended as a community collector with two travel aids, center turn lane, the planning buffer and sidewalks on both sides. Moving on to Salisbury Drive, that was our neighborhood collector that a lot of the residents use, really internally throughout the neighborhood. Recommending having two travel lanes, not really needed for a neighborhood collector to have a center turn lane, because it's mostly leading to residents. But we do recommend the addition of having parking on both sides. So again, parking, but it's also an increased safety measure that we put into these plans with those type of collector roadways. So traffic will often slow down a little bit when you have parking on both sides. And then, of course, in the addition to some lighting that could be put on some of those existing utility lines and sidewalks on both sides. And then our pedestrian connectors, those are what we recommend adding sidewalks to. Don't need a sidewalk on every street, but really want to make sure that we look at those key roadways that lead to the school, the parks within the neighborhood, and other community features. And so adding a five, or a four-foot minimum sidewalk on there with a planning buffer would increase the walkability. And going on, if you ever travel down Airport Road in this area, you may see a lot of driveways. There's also a lot of streets that enter onto the road from the neighborhood. The sidewalks are really fragmented within here, and a lot of that contributes, one is the lack of sidewalks, but a lot of that contributes to those continuous driveways. It's hard to have sidewalks when you have such large driveways. The stormwater management, the drainage is really inconsistent as well. In a lot of areas, you'll have those open bar ditches, but in some areas, you don't. So you'll see some recommendations as we can move on for that. And then really, we lack land And then, really, we lack landscaping along Airport Road. So as we look through this a little bit more, you know, given the fact that Airport Road is a major arterial and handles that heavy traffic, well, we are recommending some safety measures that could be put in place. So there, you see that we identified those key intersections. Those sidewalks, like I mentioned, you know, are very infrequent. Need to make sure that we have some uniform streetscaping in the form of landscaping. Really, the parking lots, as I mentioned before, with a lot of those businesses come all the way up to the roadway, and so you don't have a lot of opportunity right now for landscaping or sidewalks because of that. So what we're recommending is the closure of some driveways, and so what would happen is, is that that would create the opportunity for a more uniform streetscape with the landscaping, as well as the continuous sidewalks or side path along Airport Road. And the, you know, with the number of streets that are intersecting with Airport Road, it would work really well, because those businesses could easily access their establishment from those roadways that are adjacent to there. So you can see that we're recommending a lot of, some driveway closures there. There is one on the far west side that we're recommending to use as a shared driveway between two different businesses, that you'll see a little bit later as we talk on, as we look on this plan recommendations. And then we have some that we do recommend remaining open, but really, the driveway width can be reduced to where it's not the entire length of the property, so it's a lot safer.
Erin, would Texton be involved in that, or is it just the city? Is Texton too?
Yes, most definitely Texton, yeah. We're actually completing, on the other side, the Nugent Street, Nugent Street construction plans right now. That was a recommendation that came out of Jackson Park, and a lot, we found throughout that, that a lot of children will walk from Jackson Park over to Jefferson Elementary, and you can just see where they're walking. And with that project, even though it is, Nugent is a city street, it runs into Third Street, which is a Texton street, it's per 290, as you're aware of. And right there at the corner is that gas station, which you may be familiar with, and it has these continuous driveways. So right now, we're already starting measures like that, we're working with them like that on that project to reduce that. So hopefully, we get them on board, and they've been great to work with so far. So moving on, these is, so you saw what the current zoning was earlier in my presentation. Now, this is what we really think that the zoning should be within this plan area. You can see predominantly, single-family, with the commercial retail edge along Airport Road, and some mixed-use development there on the eastern side of the planned boundary that's shown in purple. Kennedy Powell, of course, is shown as the school campus up there in blue, but really, you know, this matches what the intent is for the neighborhood in the neighborhood plan, as well as some existing conditions. And then I'll talk a little bit about the linear park that we're recommending that you see there in the far right. So here is an exhibit that shows what we're calling Northwest Hills Trail. There is an existing floodplain, as well as drainage area within there, and we feel like it would be a great opportunity to put in a trail that would really break up and create a buffer between the existing single-family, and potentially some new single-family, and the commercial edge along Airport Road. It would also provide the residents with an opportunity to have a long trail within their neighborhood that could also connect eventually to downtown with a lot of our other trails that we have planned within the area. We show some opportunity for some neighborhood mixed-use within there, and as you can see, we also feel that this could connect to parks, as well as provide some detention opportunities that don't currently exist right now. Here is just an example of how, on the very top, that would be an existing residential lot, and you can see, just that's an example of how those residents could access that linear trail corridor behind their homes. There would be some times where we would need to create a bridge over that drainage corridor to allow for the pedestrians to get to the other side. And then here is our Northwest Hills Neighborhood Center. So that was that vacant parcel on the southeast side, just adjacent to Airport Road, that's largely undeveloped right now, and so we see a great opportunity for a combination of some multifamily housing, provide a variety of different housing choices, could be town homes as well, some more commercial, which would be in the form of shopping, dining, office, personal service uses. You see the detention that could provide on the far right, as well as some other options for a variety of different single-family uses. And really, bringing in the character of the neighborhood, that's why we're calling it the Neighborhood Center. This is what this neighborhood lacks right now. I think there is one neighborhood service use right now for this neighborhood, and so if this were developed, you know, it could, people, it could be for people that are traveling down Airport Road, within the Temple community, but really, you know, walkable for the residents. And then here are just some examples, what you could see there. So the mixed-use Neighborhood Center, we would want that to be very walkable, so have more of the parking, have a trail along there, have more of that pedestrian experience, where people can walk right up to it, and then the parking is behind that pedestrian connectivity, so there's more of a street front with the shopping, as well as adding some live-work units that provide some flexibility with people that own their business and want to live in the same spot, as well as some compact single-family, which is effectively a variety of types of single-family. It can be anywhere from, you know, your smaller lots, to more of a larger lot, but mostly have a small, private yard, shared driveways, and just provide some more flexibility for single-family homes. And then moving over to the west end of the planned area, we showed that new neighborhood collector there, that would basically run parallel to Airport Road, and so you can see, you know, we're proposing some commercial development along Airport Road, that would be able to have access via a shared driveway, as well as that, from that neighborhood collector. And then that collector would also provide a buffer to the single-family area. We have some opportunity as well, with some existing floodplain that exists, to create some detention for this area that comes along with this development, as well as some existing And then, we always look at neighborhood identification. This was a fun one, you know, Northwest Hills, we immediately thought of a compass, you know, giving you a directional, so we kind of built on that, but then also the hills aspect of the neighborhood name. And so we built that into a couple of options for the neighborhood residents. And then here are a variety of those projects that we identified. Of course, you know, with the city, we could focus on capital, so focusing on roadway improvements, sidewalk, water sewer improvements, and then, but we do also show that in comparison to the proposed redevelopment and infill development opportunities. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much, that's very informative.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Now to the next presentation.
Yes. I don't know if I keep clicking, or, oh, look at you all. I don't know who did that, but that's great. Okay, so I'm really excited about this one. So I'm gonna first go over a little bit of what the Temple Revitalization Corporation is, and we actually created this a little over three years ago, I'll never forget, because I worked very hard on that, when my son has just born, so the age of the TRC is my son's age. But no, it's a great resource. So as a city right now, we have a lot of limitations as it involves transferring or conveying property. So if the city owns any property, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to follow in order to convey that. And so, a lot of cities are creating local government corporations. You may have heard of landbanks, that's kind of an old thing that people have done. Houston Landbank, very popular, been very successful, is actually a local government corporation. Started as a landbank, converted to a local government corporation. And so people use local government corporations in a variety of ways. Chapter 431 of the Texas Transportation Code does allow for Texas cities to form LGCs, to act on behalf of the city, to achieve basically any governmental purpose. And so we created the Temple Revitalization Corporation to do what I was talking about earlier, about conveying, acquiring, holding property within the city of Temple. A lot of times, the city was, was able to purchase property for, in a variety of ways. It may have been, sometimes for like a right-of-way project, people choose to sell their entire property versus, you know, the city just taking a portion. So throughout that entire process, you know, the city has acquired several different lots. And, you know, the TRC, when we started looking through that, we decided that we really wanted to look into a community development program. What are the goals and the benefits of this? And it's a multitude of things, you know, it's anything from creating more residential properties, as well as looking at economic development, which includes commercial properties as well. So with that, we created this local government corporation, and that is governed by a five-member Board of Directors, who is our, who are acting city council members. The board does appoint officers of the corporation, so we have some employees, which are, some of us wearing, serving in some dual roles, so our president is our city manager, Bryn Myers, I'm serving as the vice president, our secretary is our city secretary, Chan Llewellyn, and the treasurer is our finance director, Tracy Bernard. And currently, the TRC owns 80 properties. So I am excited, because this is our very first one. So you all are very familiar with this property, it is right across 31st Street from Temple High School. It's undeveloped, formerly, you know, the Johnson Brothers Ford, and so the city acquired that several years ago. And, you know, we put in Matthew Wilson Way, we made some improvements to the 31st Street, by the high school with the roundabout, and so it's just a great property that's a little over two and a half acres inside size. It's a little oddly shaped, but we, as a city, have really wanted, when we saw this property, we knew that we really wanted to encourage retail and restaurant, and particularly a sit-down restaurant in this location. We want to see more of that along our I-35 corridor, as well as other areas within the city. So the TRC went out and released a request for proposals, that was in January, and we received one proposal from Circo Development, they are an endeavor real estate entity, who has done a lot of development, and I'll show you a little bit about what they've done. So they were established in 1999, I've been working primarily with Adam Zimmel, he's the principal of the firm. So they've completed so many different projects. I mean, they've, they've done many different types of shopping centers. As you can see, they did the district in Temple, that is the retail-commercial development that is directly across from Scott and White, they're on 31st Street. So they did that, with a lot of those retail buildings, as well as the restaurants and apartments back there. And then you can see, they've done a ton of different development in Austin, Dripping Springs, Round Rock, Cedar Park. Lots of different types of development, anything from multifamily, industrial, to retail office, and see a lot of their developments containing both retail and restaurants. So overall, they have acquired and developed over $5.4 billion of real estate assets. So, oh, I went too quickly, sorry. So here are two concepts that they provided to us. So they proposed to purchase the property for a little bit over $1.1 million, or $10.50 a square foot, and they proposed to market the property in two ways. And this is why, because, the reason, main reason they do that, how they've explained that to us, is because they have to see what is out there with the market, you know, what is needed within this area. So they're marketing in two different ways, but with the preferred option having a sit-down restaurant. So I'll go over, I'll go over a couple of those. So option A, that you can see in the top hand of the screen, that they're promoting, there are two retail buildings, or they could be quick-service restaurants with a drive-thru that would be along the North General Brew's Drive corridor, with the opportunity for two additional retail buildings along that drainage corridor. That is very similar to the Wildcat Plaza plan that we developed, I forgot to mention that. When we did this, we created a development plan for what we wanted to see, and we called it Wildcat Plaza, and they're keeping, they said they'll keep the name, so hoping they continue that, because I think it's a great name next to the high school. And then option B would be more of your sit-down restaurant. So you can see that pad site there, it's around 5,400 square-foot building, you know, you need more room for parking with a nice sit-down restaurant. And then another opportunity for a pad B site, that's a little bit closer to Temple High School and 31st Street. That could be anything from a retail building, to even a more of your quick-service, you know, a smaller dining establishment. And so they are promoting, but to help encourage someone that would like to build a restaurant, a nice sit-down restaurant, we have agreed for them to market option B with a property and sales tax incentive. It's a maximum of three years, it would start at 100%, and then 75% the second year, and 50% the third year. So we're hoping that will really encourage a nice sit-down restaurant over there. So the council and the TRC board did approve that at their last meeting, and so, but we do, so we've entered into the contract, and so right now, we are in with the inspection period. So it's 120-day period. Following that, we'll have a permitting period. This provides them with the ability to get together a site development permit for the city's review and approval, a replat of the property, as well as compliance with the city's master signage program. They have 180 days to do this, but, you know, pending some things that happened, we built in some contingencies, so they do have the ability to have up to three 60-day extensions with that. Currently, this site is served with sewer, but not water. So we've been working with the adjacent landowner just to the south, which ironically doesn't have sewer. So that property will be, will be, the city will be extending sewer to that property, and an eight-inch water line to serve this property, and that will extend within a public utility easement along 31st Street. And we are just...
Is that a flat incentive for the sit-down restaurant, or is it on a scale depending on what type of restaurant it's going to set up?
Yeah, it's, it's flat, of what we have right now, we're kind of calling it a restaurant incentive program, but we've spoken to Circo and Adam, and we'll have the opportunity to review the restaurant. So, we're really excited about it, we're hoping to bring some, a nice sit-down restaurant close to the high school, I think it would be perfect for Friday nights, as well as some other nights in the week, so.
Well, appreciate the partnership with the city and the school district. I'll echo what Dr. Ida said several times, that this is sort of the front door to Temple, I guess the Wildcat Plaza area, the high school area, and it's sort of your first impression. So appreciate the city going the extra mile on this, and actually including us, you know, in some of the discussions on this, and that's, yeah.
Well, thank you, Dr. Ida's always willing to meet with us, and we appreciate that, we know how busy he is, so.
Never too busy to work with the city.
Thank you all.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thanks for coming tonight, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Item B is update on legislative efforts. I guess that's Shannon.
Would that be me?
Shannon Gallin, in Virginia.
Okay, well, I can come up with something. Recently, Virginia Suarez, Lanille Davis, and I went to Austin to attend Raise Your Hand Texas, where we, as a board, have been learning how to improve our legislative advocacy skills, and this was, for us, this was the second three-day class, and so we don't all go to all of them, because we don't want to have a quorum at each of them, but what we learned at this was really exciting. We took some of our draft legislative priorities, and we were able to sit down with Senator Betancourt, Chief of Staff, and even though he's not our senator, but, and present our legislative agenda to him as a team, and he was able to give us some feedback on how we did, and apparently, I think we did really well. I think our legislative agenda looks really great, too. But it just, it was, it was a nice time to be able, it kind of gave you some confidence in how to go down to the Capitol and speak about what we in this area need, and it really, it was a great, it was a wonderful class, it was a wonderful time.
Yes, and we also were able to observe other school districts of different sizes, and see the similarities of some of their legislative agenda items that were similar to ours, and those that were not. It really opened our eyes to challenges that other districts faced that we had no clue. So it was very interesting just to see that part of it, but it was, it took kind of the fear out of it, because the thought of going and talking to legislators is kind of scary, but we got some really positive feedback, and, and just kind of pointers on where we could fine-tune our presentation, and things that we could look at to better serve our area and our... to better serve our, our, our area and our district.
And we had, you get fifteen minutes of this chief of staff's time. And if you don't get him in the, in the first couple minutes of that, um, then he's probably not going to listen to the rest of it, and you're going to be walking out the door. And so, uh, it was, it was really neat to figure out how to present it as a team and who was doing which part. And I, I really, I think that we, we all came together nicely, and I can't wait to go down to Austin.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate everybody's efforts in this. This is such an important aspect of our role, which is sort of new for us, and I think it's going to pay off for us in the future.
Well, and I think maybe there's some people here, too, that don't know that, um, what we've recently done is we've been having listening circles with folks in our community from, um, the Public Policy Council, with the chamber folks, with students, um, with the Ministerial Alliance, different groups to, um, have them come and tell us, you know, what their thoughts are about the district. And, and it strictly was a listening circle. We listened to them, and we didn't respond. We didn't, um, prod or encourage them to say one thing or another. They, uh, they came in and, and gave us their true feelings. And one of my favorite listening circles was actually the students. They, they talk a lot more than the adults do, believe it or not. And they have some strong opinions about what we're doing. And so, uh, I really enjoyed that, and I look forward to doing it some more.
Very good, thank you. Item C is consideration of approval and acceptance of the annual financial audit report for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. This is Stanford.
Did I hear this was exciting? So, good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Ott. Um, we are presenting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four financial audit for your review and consideration. Now, before you guys kind of freak out when you see this gigantic book and your eyes start glazing over, no, it's not to collect dust. Yes, some of us, including myself, read it from cover to cover. Um, but our desire tonight is to try to present this in a way that this does not seem so complicated and scary, um, but trying to take a different approach than we've taken in years past. And so first, I want to address to you the whys of a financial audit because I'm not sure that we've ever explained them in the past. First, it's an annual requirement of Texas Education Agency. Second, it's a financial tool for potential bond investors. It paints the picture of Temple ISD in terms of initiatives, strengths, and economic outlook, to name just a few. It may surprise you that they also read this from cover to cover before they decide to invest in our bonds, and that's how we got a lot of new, um, investors in our Bond Series twenty twenty-four that we went out this last spring for. Then the external review component ensures our financial statements are presented accurately and fairly as well as test our internal controls to assess an opinion on if we are considered a low risk for the occurrence of fraud. This year, we partnered with Singleton Clark and Company as an, as are an external audit firm, and we worked closely with the partner Nathan White and his team for this audit. And so at this time, I'd like to welcome Nathan White to help me present.
Thank you, Brandy.
Welcome, Nathan.
Appreciate it, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, board members. Um, so tonight, um, I'll go ahead and get right to it. If you don't mind, we're going to go ahead and flip to the back of the report. I know that seems counterintuitive, but we're kind of going to start in the back and work our way forward. So it's actually kind of a second, um, report, uh, to the first one here. We're going to be on page nine. I know that sounds also kind of odd, odd given that we're going to the back. But you kind of have two components to your report. There you go. So everybody should be on a page. At the top, you'll see schedule of findings and question cost. And, um, Brandy and I, uh, came up with this PowerPoint, uh, as she mentioned, to try to kind of help walk through what some of these things mean. Um, at the top here, you have section one, summary of auditor's results and the type of auditor's report issued. Um, that's unmodified. And what that means in short is that we didn't have to modify any of our opinion language to suit the district's financial statements. It means that we believe the district's financial statements are free from material misstatement whether due to fraud or error. Um, going down a little bit there, you can see the internal control over financial reporting. Uh, this relates to the financial audit. Um, we have no material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies, and no non-compliance material to the financial statements. Um, in the section below that, uh, going over the federal awards here, um, I'll pause for a second. The district receives more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding, which means that, uh, you meet the single audit, uh, requirement threshold. Um, and so we have to do an additional audit. This relates back to like the nineteen eighties when they passed this. Um, and it just means that we have to do an additional, uh, prescribed amount of testing over certain major programs, which are any program that you've gotten over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in its own right. So, um, this year, we had two major programs, uh, that we were required to do, and that's the special education cluster and the, uh, ESER grants. Uh, you have ESER two, ESER three, and ESER two homeless. Um, in both cases, we maintained an unmodified opinion and again, had no any, or no audit findings or, uh, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or any material non-compliance related to the single audit. So to summarize, everything under the hood looks clean. Um, down here at the bottom, uh, you can, I'll touch on something Brandy wanted to, uh, kind of take notice of, which is that you qualify as a low-risk oddity. Um, that has some additional, uh, weight in terms of your purchasing thresholds and things that the district can do, and I'll let her touch on that here in a second. Um, just the way that you maintain this is by having single audits every year. It, it starts after your second full year of being a single audit. So in your third year, you guys have been a single audit for a long time. It's a big school district. Um, and then just maintaining all of these, uh, check no boxes, if you will, on all the findings and material weaknesses and significant deficiencies.
So what this means, um, for the district is that the administrative burden for purchasing items for the classrooms or for extracurricular programs means that we're able to establish a higher limit, and we're not having to bid out as much or obtain three quotes as much to make a single purchase. And so that actually helps teachers get the materials they need for on the competition fields and in the classroom quicker. But then it also means that our directors are not spending as much time being selected by audits by TEA or federal governments because we are considered low risk. We just take our turn when it comes time available. But we're not on the high-risk, um, category.
The next slide here will be on page forty-four, so we're going to go ahead and flip kind of toward the front of the original report itself. And this will be actually kind of a brief one. I just wanted to point out a couple of things for you guys. So in governmental accounting, we utilize something called the modified accrual basis of accounting, uh, primarily as our measurement tool. This, however, is, uh, the statement of net position. This is a balance sheet as if the school district was a corporation or any kind of, uh, private entity. Um, everything is full accrual basis. So, um, and the reason I actually wanted to draw your attention to this is in relation to upcoming GASB, uh, pronouncements that are coming out that will be effective for FY twenty-five. So, uh, a few years ago, uh, some of you may remember, uh, GASB sixty-eight and seventy-five. And that required, um, governmental entities to recognize a net pension liability and an OPEB liability for all of those benefits that are, you know, wonderful, uh, teachers receive, uh, in retirement. And, uh, so on the district here, if you follow those data control codes on the left there, those four-digit figures, and you scroll down to, or pan down to, uh, two-five-four-zero, you can see the net pension liability. For the district this year, that, that liability is forty million, two hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. And the, uh, line below that represents the OPEB liability. It's seventeen million, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Just as a side note, there's nothing that the district can do about these liabilities. You could try to pay the state fifty-seven million dollars if you wanted to, and a new liability would appear because it's just your portion pro rata of the state's actual liability. So, but the reason I bring that up in relation to new GASB that's coming out in FY twenty-five is there's going to be another sizable liability that the district will have to recognize for compensated absences. And they've kind of rewritten the language and the requirements as to how we measure those things. And some of it's still a little gray and fuzzy. We'll have better, a better understanding in the spring of how TEA, uh, wants districts to measure those liabilities. But you will have another large liability on the books when you see me this time next year. Um, and then, so that will have an effect on your unrestricted net position. Next, if you want to flip to your right, uh, to page fifty, we're going to go over that modified accrual basis of accounting. Uh, as I was speaking to earlier, that governmental entities typically actually measure, uh, their financial, uh, statements in. And so again, I want to draw your attention to the data control codes on the left. Those are function codes. Um, come budget time, uh, this may, uh, jog your memory. Um, you know, you have function eleven there for instruction, so on and so forth. But this is, uh, directly related. That's how it, uh, when you think about your budget and how you're doing it, your object codes are a classification for sure, but financially speaking, you report on functional line items. So just keep that in mind going forward. Um, but I want to draw your attention to a couple of things here. Um, and the first one here is you have the issuance of the maintenance tax notes down at the bottom in seventy-nine fourteen. The loan proceeds there, um, those will be used, my understanding, to fund various capital projects this coming year. And then you have the sale of real and personal property, uh, which represents the sale of Dixon Campus and Crestview Neighborhood Lot and Woodson Field. Um, and then one last thing I was going to touch on before I hand this back over to Brandy. Um, you have ESER three to the right of that. That's considered a major fund this year. There are different thresholds that require us to present certain funds as major funds. Um, but I just wanted to, um, kind of lead off into what Brandy's about to say with this is the last year that ESER three is going to be able to supplement the general fund for all of the various salaries and expenditures that it's been, uh, able to do over the last three years.
Okay, so looking at the green parts, you guys are all very aware that we participate in a tax increment reinvestment zone. What this is, is it's a zone designated with this, within the City of Temple boundaries that there's a portion of collections that, of taxes that Temple ISD receives, and we pass them straight through to the City of Temple. What you notice in the second green box is that it says payments to tax increment fund of fourteen point nine million, and then there's another one point two million on the debt service side. That is how much we issued to the City of Temple. That is not how much we received in tax collections, which I'll go, go more into that here in a minute. But embedded in top in the fifty-seven hundred category for both of those funds, that's what that first green arrow is, that is the tax collections are embedded in there that also pass through, through the tax increment reinvestment zone, which is unique to Temple ISD. You want to talk about fund balance?
Yeah, so, uh, the district for the year ended FY twenty-four, uh, added twelve million, four hundred and three thousand, or four hundred and three thousand and ninety-nine dollars to end at forty-five million, eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, seventy-one dollars. Um, and in the next slide, we're going to go ahead and address, I think, oh, I'm sorry. Before that, we're going to touch on the capital projects funds. My apologies. Uh, on page fifty-one, we have capital projects fund one. Um, that represents the twenty twenty-three bonds you guys passed um, and, and the campus that is just about complete, uh, or was complete almost as of June thirty, twenty twenty-four, I think, from a full construction, um, perspective. And then capital projects fund two, uh, where you issued bonds in twenty twenty-four to vary, uh, to fund more capital projects.
Okay, so this is where we go back to that tax increment reinvestment zone, um, discussion. There are two types of tax collections, as you very well know, one for general fund and one for the debt service fund or INS. For the general fund, we collected seven point nine million in tax collections. However, we remitted to the City of Temple fourteen point nine. So the state does hold us harmless at six point nine, uh, million dollars. On the previous slide that we talked about on, in function, or data control code fifty-eight hundred, that is where that hold harmless is embedded. You don't see it broken out, but it is in there to make us whole. Then for the debt service fund, the tax collections are three point five million, but we paid out one point two million. This is because we collect at our current tax rates for the year that, that is assigned, but yet we remit to the City of Temple at the two thousand and five tax rates. So for debt service fund, that two point two million that is left over that does not go to the tax increment reinvestment gets to be put towards other future bond obligations and helps, helps us to hold the INS tax rate steady. Yes, sir. On the, on the general fund side, yes. And so that is where the state has to hold us harmless and, and kick back that payment to us. However, on the debt service side, I believe it was thirteen cents at the time? Fourteen cents? I'll have to go back and look. But the difference we get to actually keep on that one because our debt service rate is higher. But on the general fund, we do require that hold harmless from Texas Education Agency to make us whole in order for this partnership to work. And so- We get the difference, yes, sir. We're made whole. Now, I will tell you, for example, Nathan White had never heard of a tax increment reinvestment zone before, so we got to educate him, um, very lengthy discussions. And so if you were comparing this to a neighboring district, for their J-one schedule, that bottom line where I've boxed it out in green, they do not have that entire line on their schedule. No one knows what tax increment reinvestment zone means except for Temple ISD, and then Belton and Troy have a very tiny piece of it. But we have the majority of the zone in our area. And so this is one unique aspect for Temple ISD, and that is reported on our audit report. Um, when we get reassessed our bond rating every year, they ask us lengthy questions regarding the tax increment reinvestment zone because it is very uncommon. Okay, moving forward. Um, Nathan mentioned that we are adding a little over twelve million to fund balance this year. However, we need to break this apart. And so this is a copy of your page forty-six. It is the bottom section on your forty-six that I just took out the section that I want you to focus on that is labeled fund balances. So on page forty-six, you've got different classifications. The first one right underneath fund balance is inventories and prepaid items. These are non-spendable. These are actually items housed in the warehouse. We cannot do anything with that money, but we have to account for them in our fund balance. Then we have restrictions. The restriction is the three point five million in tax maintenance note that is dedicated to the Wildcat Stadium renovations. That money will be used this year to fund that project, and so that money basically came in, showed as a fund balance increase, but it's going to go right back out the door. Next, you have all of the commitments. And so at the end of, the end of the year, when we adopted the budget for the, for the last year and the current year budget, I asked you guys to consider committing six hundred thousand. That was the sale proceeds from Dixon. What that is meant to be is that is the first and second year payment for the tax maintenance note, so that way we can cover the overlapping that we have with the athletic, um, revenue bonds that we'll be paying off. The next portion is the assigned fund balances that Dr. Ott has assigned at year-end. These consist of the Bonna Middle School vest, excuse, security vestibule. This is the Kennedy Powell Private Driveway. This is, um, an employee retention payment. This is to cover the copy or replacement when it comes due. And this is a requirement for compensated absences. Now, Nathan mentioned that there's going to be a pronouncement next year and compensated absences as part of this. This is only the compensated absences that Temple ISD has committed to paying when somebody has stayed with the district long-term and is retiring. We cash out a certain amount. And so we have to set aside that amount in case they were all to come in tomorrow and decide to retire. We could be able to pay it out. What's left over is your unassigned fund balance. So out of this, this 12.4, what I want you to notice is, as we laid it out, 12.4 is what was added to the fund balance for this fiscal year. 1.6 million represented the sale of properties that you saw on a previous page. 3.5 is the maintenance tax note, so that leaves a 7.2. How did we add 7.2 to fund balance? It's simple. The 7 million that Nathan mentioned was S R that we supplanted over to S R for the last year, is what that accounted for. So if we look at in all reality, without S R, we only added 192,000 to fund balance. Any questions before we move further on to this fund balance discussion? So that increase to fund balance is for one-time expenditures only. So let me take you into, we recently met and we discussed some one-time expenditures or one-time needs. So first, I need to tell you that the health of fund balance is measured relative to the current year budget. So we may tell you that fund balance represents 4.53 months of last year's budget, so that is a healthy measure. But yet, for this current year's budget, that's 4.29 months. Why did it decrease? Because we adopted a larger fund balance. For the CE local policy that the board has adopted, we are to keep no less than three months operating budget in unassigned fund balance. So when I came to you the other day to just have you begin thinking about one-time needs, true needs of the district, those included the board-approved deficit budget, all of these are listed under the one-time considerations up on the screen. This includes the ESA reclassification. This is because our title funds, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, all of the entitlements decreased with no notice. We've got additional staffing needs. Of course, this is just an estimate. We did win the property value audit for tax year 2022 that helps offset some of these amounts. We have an employee retention payment that there's an estimated overage from what we were already projecting to, to set aside with the assigned fund balance, that that is inherent in case we need it. The Temple High School HVAC renovations is on here. A banned 18-wheeler. This includes the cab and the trailer to pull it. The Kennedy Powell furniture replacement schedule. And then the next one that is very unknown with a bunch of question marks is the May 2024 windstorm damage. Currently, this year, we've spent 644,000. We're still waiting on insurance claims to figure out how much we're going to have to pay and how much insurance will reimburse. So without that number in here, we're, we could potentially use up 3.5 million of that fund balance. So after considering if we turn those into true expenditures, that means our operating budget does increase as well. So what does that mean if we were to do everything? If we were to do everything, then our fund balance requirement that we, we hit right now with the current fund balance is 3.88 months. The amount over that requirement is only three weeks and three days. So when you have taxpayers asking you, you added 12 million of fund balance, you should be adequately funded. The answer is, we are not adequately funded. We're just trying to be as strategic as possibly, possible to stretch the dollars to fit all of the needs of all of our campuses and all of our students and all of our staff. Three weeks and three days is not very long. Questions?
All right, well, on that note, thank, thank you, Brandy. Thank you very much. All right. Item C, item D, future items of discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, right. That's approval item. Members, this does require approval?
I motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Gallin.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you. Now, item D, future items of discussion. Any items you wish to bring up at a future meeting? Okay, seeing none. E, important dates, and Dr. Ott.
All right, well, first of all, those of you that had the opportunity to attend the TEF Distinguished Love Night Dinner, that was truly an extraordinary event. I mean, if I were to pick one word to describe it, it'd be humility. The honorees were so gracious. It was such a special evening, and as the Education Foundation ran, or they ended up, I guess, receiving an amount, or fundraising an amount higher than, than they ever have. So that was fantastic, and that bodes well for student scholarships and for teacher innovative grants. So we're very excited about that, and I appreciate all of you for being there that had the opportunity to be there. All I have is the board, I have pep rally October 25th. I guess that's just a regular pep rally at the high school gym. And then I have board policy. That's October 30th. We have, the 31st is a Board Facilities Committee meeting, and we have a staff workday that same day and student holiday. Does that sound right, Monica? Okay, so it, so that is right. Okay, perfect. And are we, can't the facilities committee meeting, we're, we're doing that one here? The one in October, is that going to be over?
That's, that's the one that we would, we would like to do at the athletic facility.
Okay. Okay. Policy. Got it. So even though it says admin building on the one for October 31st, we will actually meet over at the athletic training facility, and we'll let you know ahead of time. And we may have an opportunity not just to see what's going on there, but maybe for those of you that haven't had a chance to go see the gym that was replaced due to the tornadoes and storms and so forth, we can always walk across there and see that as well. I know some of you have attended some of the volleyball games, so you've had a chance to see it. But for those of you that haven't, we can go over there as well. Dan, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven, consent items, items A through H3. How, what is the pleasure of the board to deal with these items?
I move to approve consent items 7A through 7H3.
Motion made by Ms. Gallin, is her second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Item eight, action items. A, human resources. One, staffing update. Dr. Ward, welcome.
Good evening. If I were teaching, I'd be like, y'all need to stand up and stretch. You've been sitting too long. But tonight, I'm going to be giving you an update on staffing. As you know, we, we increased our, our class sizes this year because of our budget deficit. We also rezoned due to the closing of one campus and opening of another. And so this is a perfect time to update you on our staffing. We're going to be talking-
Donna, can I make one comment really quick? I just want to state this, that going into the budget next year, the number one priority is to reinstate the ratios the way they were. That has, that has to go back. I know if it's, I know it's one kid, you know, up and down, but that's, that changes things. And it's not just one kid in the class. It's, it changes things altogether in terms of the number of teachers you have in a building, for example, number of aides you have. I mean, there's a lot of changes, not just the one kid in the one classroom. So, so just know that going into, I mean, we're certainly hopeful, right? That the state legislature will see the need to fund public schools in the session. Feeling pretty optimistic about it, but the number one priority is to readjust those. So just know that will mean adding positions to the district, but those are going to be classroom-centric positions is what we're talking about, okay? All right.
So we're going to be talking about leveling classes and what that looked like this year. Position adds that we've had to consider this school year. Our substitute fill rates based on our market value increase for subs. And then Mr. Lopez will be talking to you about our Certification Academy for Temple Teachers, our CAP program tonight. So first, I want to talk to you about leveling our classes. You know, our, our goal is always to, to staff appropriately to meet the needs of our campuses, but to also be fiscally responsible. And so as you know, or as Eric always says, kids don't show up in groups of 22. And so in looking at campuses at the beginning of the year, you may have predicted this many kindergarteners are going to show up at each campus, but in reality, sometimes they don't. And so our kid, we actually increased enrollment in our kindergarteners this year, but you'll see through my presentation that we've had to move some kinder teachers because they didn't show up at that campus. Okay, so that's what leveling is. And so in, end of July, beginning of August is when I really start looking at student numbers to determine potential moves that may need to be made, or potential adds that need to be made. But it's really in September that when kids start coming in, enrolling after Labor Day or pri, just prior to Labor Day is when we really get that ball rolling. And so one of the things that I have to do is I need to coordinate with Eric in Student Services because he has to leave room for trans, compliance transfers as well. And so when I take too many classes away, he starts feeling the squeeze, which he feels this year, right, Eric? You've reminded me several times that I'm squeezing you too much. But that's just because, you know, we were trying to be fiscally responsible this year as well. So we're going to start with pre-K. And in this slide, you'll see that our bilingual students have really remained flat. So we did not need to make any adjustments there. But when you look at our general ed population at the pre-K center, last year, we had 266 students in the general ed pre-K classrooms. And this year, we have 308, which is a difference of 42 students. So when you think about class size that TEA says we have to have, that's 22 to 1. And then when you think, so we, we definitely needed two more teachers at the pre-K. And so looking at kinder classes then across the district, there were two campuses that stood out, Kennedy Powell and Jefferson. And so they, they had a lower-than-expected enrollment of kindergarten students. And so we moved one teacher from each campus to pre-K. And so that got us within that 22 to 1 ratio. We did have to add a paraprofessional at the pre-K center because while we have to maintain a 22 to 1 teacher ratio, we have to also maintain 11 to 1 adult ratio. So that pre-K teacher plus that paraprofessional keeps us within those guidelines. Okay?
So the, just so the board knows, the, the irony of that whole situation about having a higher staff
Half day. So then our next area of concern is fifth grade at Thornton Elementary. So they started with 30 to 1, 30 fifth graders in each classroom. And my thought was that they didn't all show up, right? Because you never know who's going to show up or not. No, they all showed up. And so we quickly knew that we had to address that before Labor Day because that's a lot of fifth graders in a classroom. And so looking across the district, we saw that Western Hills was sitting at a 16 to 1 ratio before leveling. And if we moved a teacher to Thornton, fifth grade, that would increase their student ratio up to 21 to 1, but it would reduce the, the ratio at fifth grade in Thornton to 23 to 1. So, and the other nice thing is the teacher that we needed to move has taught at the upper level before, and so it was a good fit for everybody. It's never fun to tell a teacher you're going to move them. They have already bonded with their campus, but she was very gracious and understood, so. The next area that we needed to add or make a transition is at Travis Science Academy. Now Travis has been asking me for a science teacher for probably four years, and I keep, and I kept telling him, no, you don't need it, but this is the year they actually needed it. So they started out at a ratio of 28 to 1. And so in looking across the district, Lamar Middle School was sitting with an extra ELA, our teacher, at a 16 to 1 ratio. So moving an ELA teacher to Travis to be the science teacher allowed that leveling to go at 20 to 1 at Lamar, and then down to 23 to 1 at Travis. And so, and so that was the move that we made there. And so really, considering that we had, we had a rezoning this year, that's all the leveling that we had to do, which is, which is phenomenal considering all the changes that we made this year. So any questions about leveling before I move on to position adds?
Well, I think a lot of that credit goes to the projections. Because Donna's right, we opened a new school. We rezoned all the elementarys across the school district. So considering, I mean, what?
Four or five, yeah.
Considering we have 660 something left.
Okay, so next, we're going to talk about our position adds. And so when we're looking at position adds, we're really looking at two things. We're looking at our staffing guidelines to determine if there's a need to add another person because we have to comply with, with some of TEA's guidelines. And then we're also basing it on need, and we'll talk about that need here in a minute. I'll show you an example of a need. So the first area I want to talk about are our special education classrooms, particularly our FA classrooms and our autism classrooms. And so we, we, we staff those classes at a 5 to 1 ratio. Oh, sorry, I thought I bumped that. And so in looking at Jefferson, Scott, Kennedy Powell, and Western Hills numbers, well, let me back up. The 5 to 1 ratio is there has to be one teacher, and then the others can be paraprofessionals, okay? And so that's what I'm talking about. And so looking at Jefferson, while their staffing ratio was within that 5 to 1 ratio, when you look at the needs of a kindergarten classroom with maybe 12 kids in it that are autistic and they don't know how to manage their bodies yet or their disability, they, they tend to be a little more aggressive in their behavior. And so in talking with Angela Solis, and then in observations in the classrooms, we determined that they do need another paraprofessional in that room to help manage those behaviors so that they can teach the students how to be a student, right? And the same goes, and then at Western Hills, you know, sometimes there is a student who requires a one-on-one paraprofessional through their IEP. And so Western Hills has a student that requires a paraprofessional for that one student, based on the needs of that one student. And so those two positions were added. And then when we look at Scott and we look at Kennedy Powell, we did have to add another paraprofessional in two of those classrooms because the three adults we had in the room would put us really close to that staffing ratio, but we were over. So we did have to add one to be compliant with that ratio. Moving forward, looking at the high school, we did determine that some of our classes were pretty high. Specifically in our CTE department, they were sitting at 30 students to one teacher in multiple classes. And our science classroom and our social studies classrooms were also sitting at 28 to 1, which there are a lot of districts that staff at 28 to 1, 30 to 1, but we just don't happen to be one of those districts. That's not what's best for kids, and it's really not what's good for teacher retention either. And so- And so, we did post a science position, we did get to hire someone. We posted a social studies position, and we still have not hired that one yet. And then we posted a CTE general employability skills, which is exactly what it means. We're teaching kids how to be, get, become employed in the district, and there are actually standards for that through TEA. And we did hire that person. We recently felt the need to add either an AP or an IC to the campus because it is bigger. And so, we just posted that, we have not, they have not had an opportunity to hire for that position. We are not hiring both. It's who is the best qualified candidate in either of those positions, and that's the position we will hire. Questions about that? Looking at Sampson Howard, so you think about Sampson Howard, it's a brand-new campus, and you have students coming from various parts of the community who haven't learned how to, to work together yet. And so, in determining their needs for that campus and looking at the needs that have surfaced since the campus opened, we did determine that we need a behavior specialist at the campus to help guide those students in how to work together. Based on the staffing guidelines, 600 to 1, once a campus hits 600 students or more, we add another assistant principal, and Sampson Howard has reached that goal. I don't know if it was her personal goal, but they reached that goal. And so we did add a second AP, and that person has been hired, and they started today. So, I'm sure they're very excited about that. They made a recommendation for their behavior specialist today, and so we're hoping to get that person on board pretty soon as well. Garcia Elementary, we had a higher-than-usual number of students who, who do not speak English. And so we felt like we needed a bilingual intervention, interventionist on that campus. We, the principal did make a recommendation, but that person cannot get out of their contract, and so they will go back to the search and try and find someone else. And then thinking, looking at the district, Vance Willis showed us some, some good data from his department, and we determined there was a need for another computer tech. And so we have, well, we opened up for a part-time computer tech based on the data that Vance showed us. And that person has been hired and should be starting here pretty soon. And then, with the number of grants that the finance department has to manage, I mean, you heard that we have $750,000 in federal grants that we have to monitor. And so, we did post and hire a part-time accounting assistant for the finance department. So before I move on to our substitutes, do you have any questions about our adds? Okay. So, if you'll remember, we talked about an equity adjustment for our substitutes. Our, our rates were lower than our neighboring district, and so you guys graciously agreed to that, and, and we increased our rate. So you'll see the 22, 23, 24 rates at the top, beginning at non-degreed, all the way over to long-term state certified. And then you'll see our new rates right below that, in the 24, 25 row. And so, that has had a significant impact on our fill rate for our substitutes. So this time last year, from August to, from the first day of school to October 11th, our fill rate was 57%. And our current fill rate this year is 75%. And so thank you guys so much for agreeing to that equity adjustment because it truly has helped our staff. You know, the, the nice thing is that we have, we have adults in the classroom serving as substitutes. But the other nice thing is that our teachers are not having to take on extra students in the classroom. So at the elementary level, when a teacher is out and you can't fill that position, and you've already used all of your aides in another classroom, then you start combining classes. And so your, your class of 21 now is a class of 31 if you have to take half of somebody else's class. And, and at the middle school level, it's, it means giving up your conference time so that you can help cover classes. And so, it works because they have a PLC, so we're still compliant with our conference times that we have to give our teachers, but it's not nice for our teachers to have to give up that time to plan. And so, so we're very excited that our teachers are able to get substitutes and not have distress about being out of the classroom. And the nice thing too, is that we had our very first new teacher meeting, and we had subs for everybody, so we didn't have to cancel, so that was really nice too. So any questions about that? Okay. So, and our final piece that Mr. Lopez is gonna talk about is our CAT program. And this really is, this helps our staffing because it allows us to be fully staffed at the beginning of the school year, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Lopez to talk about that.
All right, thank you very much. And so, what I did wanna just as a quick description of the CAT program, and so just as a reminder that we are targeting employees who is a paraprofessional who has 60 hours of college credit, who is wanting to pursue a teacher's certificate, and is recommended by the principal for moving into a teacher role. And so the first slide that I have here is our, the CAT program, looking at the 23, 24 school year and the 24, 25 school year, the current year. So, on the top row is by the, each one of the terms, and so each term starts at about 10 weeks. And then, so every time that we have a new term, we've had a couple of teachers added. And so as you can see, in May, we started out with three, this was the 23, 24 school year. Moving into July, we started out with, or we added one more, so we went up to four. And then in August, we went up to six, so we added two more. So the bottom line is cumulative, that first year, obviously the numbers are gonna be the same. You start seeing that difference in the second year. So in our 24, 25 school year, in July, we actually added six new members into the CAT program. And so that brought our cumulative up to 12. And then in August, we went up to nine, so adding three more, which brought us up to 15. And then shortly after school started, we do, we did lose one of our teachers resigned, and so that was one of our CAT teachers, and so that dropped our number both on the, by the term and then at the cumulative level. And so, whenever you look at our assignments, we do have, currently four are at the pre-K level, nine at the elementary, and one at the secondary. However, one of those, the moves that Dr. Ward mentioned was actually a elementary teacher moving to the pre-K level. So the numbers are a little different than what we started, and then the resignation came from a secondary teacher at the middle school. And so that leaves us with one currently at the secondary. So you can see, it's pretty heavy down at the elementary pre-K level with our CAT teachers. And so, as we look at the program, it is budget neutral, which is a great thing for the district. And so, a teacher coming in, a first-year teacher with a certificate would have a salary of 53, 555. A CAT teacher within that first year, or during the entire process, would be sitting at 44, 880. And so we're looking at 86, 75 is the difference for the year. And then whenever you look at the ACE program, it is actually, actually $7,950. And that takes approximately a year and a half to complete the 30 hours of coursework. And then moving into the I Teach program, that's about another year and a half, which is $4,449. And so whenever you look at that over the course of the three years, a year and a half for each one of those programs, we, when you look at the salary, the difference in the salary, I'm sorry, you're looking at approximately $26,000 of savings minus the cost for the ACE program and the I Teach program, which is about $13,000 total in, in that particular program. And so then, once the CAT teachers complete those two programs and they do receive their certification, we essentially lock them in for another two years, so that we do have with us for five years total over the course of that period. I forgot anything, that's, I was waiting for Dr. Ward, I was thinking I forgot something, but I think I got it. All right. And then so, moving on to our accomplishments, within this particular slide, this is something that I'm pretty excited about. I can say that in the last two years, because of the CAT program, the 23, 24 school year and the 24, 25 school year, that we've actually been able to start this school year 100% staffed, so that's a great thing for us, a great thing for the district. And then also, from the CAT teachers, we actually had one of the CAT teachers over at the Meredith Campus was actually nominated for a Rookie Teacher of the Year for the district. So they were Rookie Teacher of the Year for the campus, so that's another great testament to the principal selecting the right person to have these paraprofessionals that are then moving into that role to be in front of our students. Something else that's been pretty neat from this is that other districts have been inquiring about our model. So they have been calling, speaking to Dr. Ward and myself, we've got all the neighboring districts, some districts even further out that have been reaching out, just to ask, how are we doing this? What are we doing? How are we funding this? And so just, it's been really great to be able to kind of expand what that looks like and help other districts as well throughout this particular process. And then we were asked to present a task of this coming January at the Midwinter Conference, and so that's another great accomplishment for us. We haven't gotten the approval quite yet, but hopefully, so it's coming, and so as soon as we get that approval, we'll know for sure. But Dr. Ward and I have already started working on that presentation because we are pretty hopeful that we will be presenting. And then, one of the big things is the word-of-mouth advertisement, and so to be quite honest with you, it's monthly, I'm getting calls, emails, that people within the district have heard about the CAT program, and they're wanting some information. And so I go out, usually I go out to the campus and I'll sit down side-by-side with them and visit with them regarding what it takes to become a CAT teacher. The other thing is, I've, so far, I've, I keep track of this, I've had three phone calls from outside the district. One gentleman wasn't even in teaching, two were from other districts, and they just called just to inquire again about the program, what do we need to get, to do to get into it? And unfortunately, one of the, the requirements is that they do have to have been in our district for a minimum of a year. So that way we get to vet them and make sure that they're the right person to be putting in front of our students. And then the last piece is the success in the classroom. And so with that, we can say that our CAT teachers with one outlier have been extremely successful with classroom management, discipline in the classroom. The, these particular teachers do know our processes, our systems, and know our, our students, or, you know, they're, they have been in our system and our, the school setting for, usually for, it's gonna be longer than that year, but they do know exactly what is expected, and they're doing a very good job at managing the classrooms. And then our success rate, you know, so the two things that we're looking at as far as the success rate is recruitment and retention. And so currently, the recruitment, I would say that our numbers do show that we've been recruiting some teachers, you know, as you saw on that first slide. So we've been able to recruit and fully staff all of our classrooms, and so, so that's a huge success in, as far as how I look at this as well. And then, the next piece is gonna be the retention rate, and honestly with that, we don't know that just yet, and we're gonna take a couple of years before we get to that. But next year, the year after that, we'll start seeing as far as retention goes and seeing if we're actually, how this is implementing our retention rate. So, so two key factors that we're wanting to continue to monitor along the way and see how we do regarding the CAT program and the success of the CAT program. So that is all for me, any questions?
Members, any questions? Well, very good presentation, Adrian, Donna, thank you. Thank you. Yeah. This is very good. Appreciate it. Item B is Academics 1, 2024, 2025 High School Course Catalog Presentation. Ms. Armstrong, okay.
Ms. Armstrong, yes.
Yes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, how are y'all tonight? Great. I just wanted to take a few moments to review the high school course catalog for changes for next school year. You do have a copy in front of you, so I'll just give you kind of a summary and some highlights. You'll see that at the very beginning, the top line, there's some language clarification, which typically happens each year. And this particular one is to the Onramps course. Below that, you'll notice Fine Arts, we're removing mariachi band. We have not had a director for that in several years. We have not had anybody certified to be able to do that, and we don't have any interest in it right now, so we're gonna remove that from the course catalog. You will notice that there are several changes from CTE. And so I'm gonna highlight a few of those. They either deepen the understanding for a student in a pathway, or it creates a new pathway for students. The second one, there's practicum in entrepreneurship, we'll talk about that one in just a moment. The practicum in law, public safety, corrections, and security, that is a piece that provides a hands-on piece for students to be able to have extra time to go into the community, go to the jail, go to courtrooms, sheriff office, and pieces like that for those experiences. And so that would run in conjunction with the other law class, law class. Right below that, you'll see practicum in hospitality services. This is new. It will combine with the, sorry, it's gonna combine with culinary, and so it'll be one semester of food, and I'll get, making food, all of that. And then the second semester, or vice versa, they will learn a little bit more about hospitality services. So what does it take to serve people, kind of that soft-side skills of that? And the purpose is to focus on service beyond food, just making the food. And then on the back, or the second page, the very last one that you have is cosmetology lab. So for students to get certification in cosmetology, they have to put in 1,000 hours of time, and so they can do about 50% of that online, but 50% of it needs to be hands-on. So, this course would allow them to be able to complete that required time and get that certification. There are a couple courses that you'll see are noted with a little carrot, and that means that Mrs. Bartlett brought those forward, our CTE director brought those forward. And we would like to offer those, but we're gonna have to kind of see what is the interest and what would be the effect on the master schedule. Okay? Any questions on this? Nope? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, you bet.
Thanks. All right. Item C, Facility Operations. Mr. Boyd, item one, consideration for approval of a guaranteed maximum price for addition and renovations at Western Hills Elementary School.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Posey. Bids were opened on October 1st by Cloud Construction for addition and renovations at Western Hills Elementary School. The pricing came in within budget, we're thrilled with that. A letter of the proposal and detailed pricing from Cloud is attached and was attached in your board book as well. So tonight, we are recommending approval of a GMP at a total maximum cost of $4,476,141. And the GMP is comprised of the following pieces below, that are in your, that are in your printout. The base bid, which includes a new addition for music and art classrooms, and that will come off the, the far north, the north wing of the building. And then classroom upgrades in all rooms that were not touched on the previous bond. Previous bond, we got in a few of the classrooms and did all the corridors. This gets us, this allows us to go in and complete what we started on the last bond. Upgrades in those rooms will include ceilings, lightings, flooring, casework finishes, life safety upgrades, and then we're also going to enhance the, the vestibule at the front. We have a secured vestibule, but as you know, we are also trying to go in and, and improve that, and extend that at all of our campuses to give an extra layer of protection, and that will also happen on this project. We specified three alternates, and we're happy to say that we can afford to do all three of those. One is exterior painting. The second one is furring out classroom walls. And really what that means is, all those classroom walls where we've got currently conduit or something exposed, we're able to fur that out, have a finished wall, much as we've done wherever we've been able to do that. We did a lot of that at Travis and Lamar a few years ago, when we went in and renovated. That's not, that's something that just gives you a much cleaner and finished look, so we were thrilled that we were able to, to include that alternate. And then finally, we have some library renovations as well. The, the library just gets a few items, but it will certainly update that, and that'll improve that area as well. So, this is a campus that's had several, several pieces through the last few bonds for improvements, so this really starts to tie it all together. As always, our GMP includes contingency funds and allowances, which if not expended, will return to the district, as well as any other savings that these guys were able to generate during the project, and they usually, usually do a very good job of that, which we're very appreciative. If approved tonight, work will begin in January, and will, will be completed in phases, but it will effectively be completed over the course of calendar year 2025. The principal's aware, and she's already met with us on what that's gonna look like. We're going to have some movement. We'll have to complete one section, move some people, utilize some, some of the portables we still have as a part of that. But, but that's something that, that's doable, it's something we've done before. And again, I have confidence in, in Cloud that they're able to do that with as minimal disruptions as are possible. So, that's a summary of what we bring to you. So that's a summary of what we bring to you tonight on Western Hills. Do you all have any questions that I can answer?
Any questions, members? This does require approval.
I recommend that the board approve a total guaranteed maximum price of four million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and forty-one for addition and renovations at Western Hills Elementary.
Motion made by Ms. Suarez.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign opposed. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate Perry and Thomas being here as well tonight.
Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Look forward to another successful project.
Yeah. All right. Item two is consideration for approval of guaranteed maximum price for a science lab addition at Temple High School.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Posey. Board, in this, there was a placeholder in your board book for this one because we did not get the final numbers from American Constructors until Friday, after the book had already been posted. But bids were opened on September twenty-six by American Constructors for the construction of a science lab addition at Temple High School. As we said earlier, as I said earlier, they were still working on that vetting the bids and formulating a GMP when the board book was posted. So tonight, we are recommending approval of a GMP at a total maximum cost of five million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, and that comes within the budget. That is, that number's within the budget of what we planned for this. The high school project is, the high school budget involves multiple projects, and so we didn't have each one specifically budgeted, but it's well within the total of nineteen million that we have for the high school work, and it's right about what we expected to spend for this addition. This addition will be on the north end of the high school, where the ninth-grade center is, and then several years ago, the district added science labs onto that ninth-grade center. This will simply extend with another set of four science labs, storage spaces and so forth, that will extend on to the east there in that same location. So then, once that is constructed, our next goal would be then to be to go in and renovate the existing rooms on the second floor in the original building that currently house science rooms that are, that are things, these are things we've needed to address for a long time. Those are, those are science labs that don't function as well as they should, and a couple of them are actually not even science labs anymore, they're regular classrooms, but they're still, they're still built in a lab format. So once this is completed, we'll come back to you with a GMP to renovate those spaces. And that'll be part of renovation efforts. Well, like I said, we've got several other pieces to this that we'll be bringing you over the next few months, but this was the first piece that we had to get out the gate before we could do that. If approved this work, they would start it sometime in December around Christmas, and then it would be completed by the end of 2025 or by January first of 2026. So we could start that next semester in those labs, and then we could start the renovation work at that point. Do y'all have any questions about that?
Members, any questions? Does require approval.
I move that we approve a guaranteed maximum price of five million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars for the construction of a science lab addition at Temple High School.
Motion made by Mrs. Myers.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Gallin. Ms. Gallin, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Boyd.
Appreciate you.
All right. Item D, Finance, no items. Item E, Student Service, the same thing, no items tonight. Item L is Board Committee Reports, the Facilities Committee Meeting Minutes. This was combined on September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four. This was combined with the Policy Committee Meeting Minute, the same date, September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, and Mrs. Cook's gonna give a report on the combined meeting.
Thank you. The meeting was called to order at four oh six PM. The staff development minutes waiver for the 2024-2025 school year was presented to allow the district to provide up to twenty-one hundred total minutes to use for professional development during the school year. The motion to approve the waiver was approved six to zero. Board Policy Update 123 was presented with the recommended changes to local policy. The motion to approve the changes as presented was approved six to zero. Mr. Boyd presented an updated rendering for the construction of a loop drive at Kennedy Powell to allow for emergency egress and car stacking space. Mr. Boyd presented recommended pricing for the purchase of high-density storage units from Southwest Solutions Group at a maximum cost of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to be purchased through the Equalist Purchasing Cooperative. A motion was approved six to zero. Mr. Boyd presented recommended pricing for the purchase of commercial washers and dryers from Perry Office Plus at a maximum cost of one hundred and ten thousand dollars to be purchased through the Byboard Purchasing Cooperative. A motion was approved six to zero. Mr. Boyd presented recommended pricing for the purchase of training room furniture and equipment from Cornish Medical at a maximum cost of fifty-four thousand dollars to be purchased through the Byboard Purchasing Cooperative. A motion was approved six to zero. Mr. Boyd discussed the request for proposal process for custodial services. A motion to extend the contract with ABM through the end of the current fiscal year, understanding that the administration would monitor improvement during that time, was approved six to zero. The meeting was adjourned at five twenty-eight PM.
Thank you very much. The next Facilities Committee Meeting is Thursday, October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, four PM, and the Policy Committee Meeting is Wednesday, October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, four PM. No further items. We are adjourned tonight. Thanks, everybody, for attending. Have a good evening.